This is Michael Clara, coming to you from Salt Lake City, Utah. This is episode two of my Flashback Friday series. And the flashback part has to do with the time that I was a member of the Salt Lake City School District Board of Education. And so I'm just flashing back to some of the experiences I had when I was on the board and kind of connecting them to things that are happening today. And so, uh, episode two is titled Unmasking Christie Sweat of the National School Boards Association. Christie is still on the Board of Education in Salt Lake City, and she was, uh, the Board President when I was elected to the Board. And I'll share some of those experiences that I had with her, um, as we get to the flashback part. Today, she is the President-elect for, uh, the National School Board, uh, School Boards Association. And that's significant because they are in the headlines today, even in June 2022. But it all starts back in, uh, September and October of last year. And, and I'll talk more about that as, as we move on. But basically what happened was the National School Board Association writes a letter to the White House about parents being, uh, disruptive at school board meetings and how we need, uh, federal intervention, uh, to the point, uh, there was even a draft letter that maybe the National Guard should be deployed, just some ridiculous stuff. And even what stayed in the final version of the letter was ridiculous about having FBI and the US Attorney and DOJ, the Department of Justice. It's just crazy. But at any rate, uh, what's, what's happened is a number of, of, of states have pulled out their associations or their state school boards have left the National, um, State School Board Association. And this is what, I'm going to start off here is, um, a meeting that occurred here in Utah back in November 4th, 2021. This is the state, the Utah State Board of Education where they're discussing, um, uh, this issue that's occurred nationally and maybe Utah should consider leaving.
Comments?
The, the National School Board Association.
Yes, I have just a letter that I want to read and submit for, um, public, as far as public record. Um, others are welcome to sign on to that if they want. I know there's a couple of board members that already indicated, um, I've left it just for you to read as well. Um, I'm just going to read down through it. I know the difference between NASB and, um, NAS, NSBA. I don't know that they blend those together, but I do think that the actions of these organizations do impact our, our families and our communities as well as, um, um, and overreach of, um, federal organizations. So I'm just going to read it. It says, Utah Families, Utah, Utah State Boards Association and Attorney General Sean Reyes. We are writing in response to the recent communications between NSBA and the United States Attorney General Merrick Garland with regards to categorizing parents as domestic terrorists and seeking assistance from federal agencies to insert their authority into state and local public school issues. Utah law is very clear that parents have the primary responsibility for the education of their children and elect representatives in the legislature and on state and local board, school boards to administer the state public education system, which promotes extensive support. The actions taken by NSBA and the United States Attorney General clearly violate Utah law and are constitutionally unsound. We would encourage elected officials to defend First Amendment rights, local control of public schools, and support Utah law enforcement as they do their job to sustain a free society. Sincerely, I'm signing my name. You're welcome to include yours and I'll include this as public, um, as a public record. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Straight. Board Member Klein?
I just want to, uh, thank Jenny for putting this letter together. A lot of, um, concerned citizens have reached, been reaching out nonstop, asking why Utah hasn't added their name to, um, I think the 22 other states that have distanced themselves now from the NSBA. And, and as you know, um, we are not, as the USBE is not a member of the NSBA. But, uh, the USBA is, um, and so hopefully the USBA will come out and make us a public statement on where they stand as far as what their parent organization has said they have.
The, uh, a member of USBA, Christie Sweat, is the new president coming up this next year for NSBA. So for the first time in decades, we have a president from the state of Utah since. We'll have, you know, to distance ourselves at this moment when finally Utah has a chance to take the leadership and really make a state.
The new president of NSBA is from Utah.
Is from Utah, and she will be taking, uh, in January, taking the, the lead.
Interesting.
So that's a, there's a chance for some really wonderful influence from the state of Utah as we can guide and, and direct that, that organization. Cause even though they were way overstepping and out to lunch, it's too bad that it's so tainted by a bad call on their leadership's part. E will have, uh, Christie Sweat as the president of, uh, NSBA. So Utah could really make some very important inroads in positive public education.
Well, I hope that, I hope that's the case and I, and I, but I do want to add my name to this, to this letter just as, for this particular incident. Thank you.
All right, so there you have it. That's, that is what has prompted me to make this, um, this YouTube video unmasking, uh, Christie Sweat. Cause if you think she's going to save this, then you don't know Christie Sweat. So let me, let's do the flashback part of this and jump back to the day when, when I served on the Board of Education, uh, with Christie Sweat. And the first, uh, example I'll give, my first year on the board, um, what ends up happening is the state legislature that fall had, had this, uh, education task force. And, and one of the topics was governance. So I went up and, and spoke to them. And, um, as this Tribune article says, uh, during the task force meeting, Clara received encouragement from Senator Stuart Reed, uh, who represented Salt Lake City's east side as a member of the city council. He told Clara to continue pressing for change, saying the west side, particularly Rose Park, is routinely neglected by policymakers. And one of the things that they asked for is suggestions on education, on things that could be done better. And so I wrote a 15-page letter, um, explaining, you know, my perspective as, uh, as this was my first year on the Board of Education. And in response to that, Christie Sweat, uh, writes a letter to the Speaker of the House and explains to them basically that, that I have no business going up, talking to the legislature. And, um, and that, uh, and, and she says that what I was saying to them was inaccurate and that, uh, this last paragraph, if you should have further correspondence with Mr. Clara, please encourage him to bring the energy he currently devotes to letter writing and filing complaints, uh, to discussions at our board table. We believe that his perspective, if it can be conveyed through civil discourse, could make a valuable contribution to our board decision-making. And, and what, what this is, this is, uh, her duplicity. The duplicitous nature, I should say, that, that she operates under, and it comes as natural to her as is breathing. Because they never let me speak, uh, at, at board meetings. They would cut me off, uh, it, 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 there's just a whole, you know, I could go on about all that, which is why I would go to the legislature and say, okay, well, you know, I'm going to represent people in my community. If, if the, uh, school board isn't going to listen to me. And it was presided by Sweat and they were experts at just creating this atmosphere where you couldn't have dialogue. Um, and, and so when I go to the legislature, this thing kind of backfires on her when she writes this letter. Because then, uh, when I go over there, it makes a front page of the Salt Lake Tribune. And then, um, she gets invited, uh, as, as her, in her role for the Utah School Board Association. And it backfires on her because she explains to the legislators in a committee hearing that, that I don't have any right to be there, um, even as a board member because that my obligation is to the Board of Education. And so this new law gets passed and John Flores, who's a former board member, and he was a columnist for the, um, for the DesRite News at the time. And he wrote this article about this new law, and I'll, I'll quote the new law in the next slide. But basically it says, the Utah Legislature reaffirmed that school board members have the obligation to speak out to ensure their constituents' interests are represented. To do less abdicates their responsibility, uh, to their constituents who entrusted them with overseeing one of the most vital institutions of our societies. And, and then, you know, what he points out over here on the left, that some seasoned school board insiders often muzzle and marginalize dissenters by ignoring them or denying them information. In their orientation, new board members are told they are supposed to get along with their colleagues, the family, and remember, they represent the corporate body and cannot speak for the board. The bureaucrats have created a maze of rules created to stifle any dissent that would disrupt the status quo. And, and he was following, you know, the, the first year of me being on the school board and would see this kind of stuff, what he's describing here about muzzling me, marginalizing me. And, and they actually went to the state legislators and said that I was, um, I don't know if they said I was a rebel or something. I can't remember what it was they said. So let me, let me also say what prompted this new law was the fact that during this, during these, uh, task force, education task force meetings, in response to me going up there, Chris, Christie Sweat goes up there with the leadership of the Utah School Boards Association and, and kind of explains here what John is, John Flores is saying that, that I don't, that I have an obligation to the, uh, school board, corporate body of the school board, and that once they vote on something, even if I disagree, I'm to just keep my mouth shut. And that I'm not to go speak at any group or anybody, speak to anybody because I don't have the authority of the board, which I never said I did. But they had this really, um, where, and they still do it today. Uh, tell board members that they can't talk to people and all this stuff. And it's just a brainwashing thing to, to, like he says, to muzzle and marginalize anybody who disagrees with, um, this concept that they have about school board members, which is really bizarre. But to, to that end, when the legislators heard both sides and heard these leaders and, uh, led by Christie Sweat, they, they created a law. They explained to them verbally that, that a school board member is like any other elected official. And that they can't, they can't, uh, um, dictate what a school board member does or says or who they talk to. So in the law today, it's, it's still there, is, uh, under the, the powers and authority of a school board member, notwithstanding the local school board's status as a body corporate. An elected member of a local school board serves and represents the residents of the local school board members district. And, and that service and representation may not be restricted or impaired by the local school board members' membership on or obligation to local school board. So if, if you don't know the, the, the context of this, that is just incredible. That legislators had to make a law like that to push back on Christie Sweat and her philosophy that, that, that they, uh, promote through the Utah School Board Association. So, so this is, you know, the result of that, that, that's what we're dealing with. So on March, uh, 12th, 2014 board meeting, what, what happened was that this was this big thing that made national news is, uh, a lunch lady over in Yuwinta, um, which is on the east side of Salt Lake City threw some kids, uh, some students lunch away. And, and what ends up happening immediately, the school district starts blaming the lunch lady. And then parents, that's not even my area, but parents called me because people said, well, call Michael Clara because their own board member wouldn't listen to them. The superintendent wouldn't call them back. And so after I met with them, um, and these are two state senators that got involved. Because there's this, you know, it's this duck and cover attitude. And Christie Sweat was the president at the time. And, and they just, you know, run for cover instead of confronting issues and admitting that they're wrong. And, and the policies were in place that, that were creating this chaos. But no, they, they have to go the other direction and, and blame actually this poor lunch lady for, for, for this. And it was a district-wide thing, I, you know, I better not get all into it. But, but at any rate, one of the things that, that happens in the midst of trying to resolve this lunch issue. And, and basically what it was that the district person from, from child nutrition goes in and is ordering the local lunch ladies to throw kids food away because their parents haven't paid the bill. And, and they just moved into a new system and it wasn't alerting parents is what the problem was. But, but under the leadership of, uh, Christie Sweat, it, they determined that the narrative was going to be that they were going to blame the lunch lady. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't go along with it. There was a couple of other board members that wouldn't either. And then at one point, they even tried to hire a PR firm. And they do it for $49,099, you know, right under $50,000 because then it doesn't have to come to the board, which is just stupid. And we found out about it anyways. And then the Tribune writes a story about it. So this is just an example of, um, in the midst of all this, this thing went on for a whole year. And in the midst of all this, we have this meeting, uh, that's going to answer school lunch questions from the Yuwinta Elementary School Community. And, and this is what happened, uh, a portion of that meeting, I'll show you. And again, this is the kind of, uh, stuff that, that she was doing back in the day. And it's still going, she still acts, behaves in this manner today.
Where's the parent request that employees not be terminated until after the investigation?
Okay, thank you.
I would second.
Hold on, I would not, but we adjourned. If parents are asking questions, I thought we had till 5:30 to answer your questions. Tell her that you guys are going to adjourn a meeting when they're asking questions.
When, when a question is asked about, um, a personnel issue, or we can't answer that here.
Well, then why don't you tell them that instead of trying to short circuit and adjourn the meeting?
Excuse me, you didn't give me an opportunity, so, thank you.
Well, I was just objecting to adjourning.
Thank you. So, um, from what I heard, I don't know who asked the question.
I did.
And what was the question?
Did we communicated with our school board member Laurel Young, asking her to, uh, bring a motion forward that no child nutrition employee would be terminated until the external investigations were completed?
Okay, well, that's something that we can't do here, you know, in a study session. There's no motions. There's no business that can be done at this point. And, you know, with that being a, um, a personnel issue, we wouldn't be able to address that right now. But I think that, okay.
I think just.
I think what I could say is that at this point right now, um, an investigation has not been held on the HR part. So I would assume that all employees would be in place until after those investigations are completed.
We want that assurance.
Well, I'm, I'm telling you that the investigation hasn't even started yet. And we have no idea how long that scope of that's going to be.
Right, and this is, so this was a meeting designed to answer the parents' questions. And I thought we were going to go for an hour. I would, I would just recommend that we honor what we said we were going to do is answer their questions. And so I'm just advocating for, and I just think it's inappropriate because I've been the victim of this myself, that we're having a discussion and then Laurel and then Neil and Doug will call for adjournment or, or call for the question. And I just think that's inappropriate to do that. And, and that we owe people an explanation and, and we have time. Uh, you know, we said for an hour that we wanted to answer their questions.
Thank you. Doug and the most, thank you.
I just wanted to explain the reason I had second Laurel's motion is that I thought it was an excellent idea with the number and breadth of questions that have been submitted by, uh, very good questions that have been submitted by a school community, that we as a school board take an extraordinary step of calling an extra meeting so we could have time to answer all those questions and present the information that we had, that we felt pretty comfortable with, without speculating. So that's why we came here today, was to answer the very long and very good list of questions. I think that our president and vice president have done that really well. That is the reason why we convened this meeting. So that is why I felt comfortable seconding the motion to end the meeting. Thank you.
That's very.
Well, I do think when we have a study session like this, I agree with Michael, it is informal. And I think if we could, even if we just say, let's take 15 minutes and allow for some questions from the audience. I mean, this, we aren't their board.
Yes.
And, you know, if we're they, where are they supposed to interact with us? We let them speak for a couple of minutes at the beginning of a business meeting. And we never really do interact unless we go to SECs. And I just think here's an opportunity to interact, maybe get some trust back. I don't see any harm in spending 15 more minutes. Let's put a cap on it at 5:30, but let's, if they want to ask a question, we can say, we can't answer that because it's personnel. That's a very easy answer. So that's all I would say, Doug.
So, you know, it's just, you know, perversely ironic that, that she talks about, um, you know, this civic dialogue and civic discourse when, when in reality that the degradation of that civic discourse, she would erode that in the capacity for any kind of collective critical thinking in board meetings. Because, you know, they were always just being manipulative and never, um, allowing anybody to talk about things that needed to be improved. It was like this happy talk always had to go on, um, which, which, you know, doesn't help anything. And it kind of defeats the whole purpose of having a school district if that's how you're going to run it. And this is what, this is, this is under her leadership and, and what she brought, this is back in 2014. Then they don't, you know, and then we, you know, again, this thing starts in February of that year. In September 2014, the headline is District Fails to Release Findings From School Lunch Investigation Sparks Outrage. So anyways, there's more to that story, you know, we can, I can do a YouTube video on that one day. So here's another meeting, uh, to move along here, one more, April 1st, 2014 board meeting. And basically what, what happened in the previous meeting, I had brought up some financial expenditures that were questionable. And, and I had said that, um, you know, that this guy Charlie Hausman was getting money from the district for work that he wasn't doing. And he's a former assistant superintendent, was now living in Kentucky. And then I do, I had to do a record grammar request, even though I was on the board. And I get these emails where they just shut all this up, where he can just write an email and say, this is before I was on the board, and say, hey, I went in on this grant. And then they, they put him in and pay him for nothing. So anyways, um, and then they, they make this letter in 2010, before I was on the board, that he can just do any job that he wants in the district. It was ridiculous. And then, um, so at this board meeting, that this is April 1st, but the one before, um, I questioned this in the public meeting, and I get shut down and get told that I can't talk about the superintendent's character in public or anything like that. Here we are in an April 1st meeting, I just want to point out, there's nothing on this agenda because I used to be a big thing for them. If I brought something up, they would say it's not on the agenda, even if it was on the agenda. But here's something that's not on the agenda. They even made this rule that you, you couldn't just bring paperwork and up, up to the board, up to the meeting. You had to, uh, turn it in 24 hours before. Nevertheless, in this meeting, without any warning, uh, to me, or it's not even on the board, they censor me. And, and you see here, she signs it and, and she says, you know, that, that, uh, um, that during the meeting of March 18th, that I made numerous personally offensive and defamatory comments about Superintendent Mikel Withers and Business Administrator Janet Roberts. While this statement is in direct response to those remarks, we recognize that Mr. Clara has made similar pronouncements in their meeting, in other meetings. So yeah, they're, they were crooks and they were corrupt. And I, and that's what my role was as a board member, that if I would send in an email or question them in private, and, and then, uh, Christie Sweat would be complicit in covering up for them, then yeah, it would come out in a public meeting, so it could be a matter of record. And, and then, you know, in the minutes here of this board meeting, it says that she distributed this letter to me. And it was like, you know, uh, there's, there's a process for it, that if I'm going to be accused of something, then I should be given the opportunity to respond. But of course, this is just, you know, their way of, of just being manipulative and trying to, um, uh, you know, shut me down, but it didn't work. So, another board meeting, October 7th, 2014. What happened here, uh, let me, let me just go into this. Um, this is like a, an apparent, um, that, that's, uh, wanting to speak at the board meeting and they don't allow her. They, you know, and like you had to call in the day of the meeting or sign up. And this parent had called in and they told her, no, you're not going to talk. So the, the parent called me. And, and then I tried to make some inquiries before then, but couldn't resolve it. Um, by the time the meeting started and when I called the superintendent's office, they said, well, you know, she already talked earlier. I said, but there's nothing in the policy. I, I'm on the board, we make the policy. There, there's nothing in there that says because she spoke in April, she can't talk in, uh, October to the board? And this is the kind of foolishness that they were just constantly doing. And again, this is under the, the, uh, under Christie Sweat and the kind of, uh, leadership that she provided.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to our reports, which is our highlights from our school improvement plans. Um, we'd like to invite Francis and Francis Battle up to the table with whoever you've brought with you, Francis, and to introduce them.
Christie, well, they're coming up. Is there?
Midley Park Elementary.
Is there?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Is there, where's it in the policy? I got a call today from a parent that was not allowed to speak because they were told they had already spoken earlier, um, this year. And so is there a limit to what people can?
No, that was the confusion that I apologize for, um, for that.
But that parent didn't get a chance to speak then, and I was never told not to.
She wants to speak as a friend, this is the one who was turned away? Can she have an opportunity?
I was calling to tell that I was not allowed to speak tonight. Or my daughter.
Is that, I don't know who it is. Oh, and so, do you want to address that as to why?
I think that the, the agenda development.
Yeah.
I think the concern, Michael, is, and Christie, is that, that we, the previous speech that you gave, crossed over those guidelines in terms of, um, what you did was pass out information from students, um, that, that you didn't have any permission to pass out. And also that there was some.
They gave it to me.
There was some, uh, concern about the, the tone of the comments that you made. So the question, the question that was asked was, what other avenues have you pursued to get this problem resolved?
Okay, okay, so I came to you, that was April 1st, and I've never addressed on any of my, my problems that I have. And it continues to be a problem after problem after problem.
Grover? Where's Kenneth? So Kenneth Grover, um, is here with us tonight. And I'm sorry, is it Chrissy? Chrissy, I'm sorry. Um, Kenneth, would you mind stepping out and speaking with Chrissy? I know he's been trying to reach you for the last three days. And so we would love for you, and if you feel like you have that conversation with him and you'd like to come back to the board and, and speak to us, then please do that.
I move that we follow the printed agenda that was written for this public.
If we move that you listen to us and hear us speak.
That is the motion that is.
Okay, so it's the rest of the board, you know, if they.
It needs to be noted that this is our business meeting. And, oh my God, we have work that needs to be done.
Let's get on with.
Okay, so I'm just going to.
The part of the.
Michael, Michael.
Would you just ask us for opinion?
I, I actually didn't, I actually didn't.
Yeah, you did. You said board.
I, I was starting to say something and then was interrupted.
But then why are they allowed to give their opinion?
So, you know, that's just some of the stupidity. You know, I, I used to think back then, and by the way, that's, we're done with Flashback Friday. But, but ba- basically what, uh, what I, you know, used to, used to think, you know, if it was just social issues like poverty that, that we had to deal with, um, we would be much better off. But the problem is in this public, uh, school system here in Salt Lake City, when you have leaders like, like Christie Sweat, who cover for, uh, bad behavior of a superintendent and his administration, you know, and then it just creates this, you know, how do you confront this, this organization that has this social demoralization? Um, it's just, it, it ends up being just this irrational organization in this context of, you know, a bureaucracy that, I, I, you know, I'm not exaggerating, but it's, it's pathological as an organization. And, you know, you just can't, it, it, you can't get anything done. And, you know, you just can't, it, it, you can't get anything done with this ideological rigidity, rigidity that they bring. And, and anyways, they just have this smug contempt that, that doesn't help anybody. Even to the point that, you know, this lunch lady, Ms. Shirley, she ends up leaving the district that year in 2014, and two years later dying of a stroke at, in the year 2016. And her family invited me to speak at her funeral, which I did. But, but, and, and they attribute her, you know, dying at sixty, you know, sixty-three is, is young, in our day and age, to, to this just stress that, that was brought upon her. And she was, you know, they blamed this on her, and Chrissy Swett was the board president and presided over this, that whole year, and allowed this to happen. And, and so this is a, this is the kind of person, you know, we're dealing with. One of the other interesting things is, remember in 2014, you know, I get this letter, get, get censored in a, in a public board meeting, you know, because, as she says here in this paragraph, "For more than a decade, the superintendent and business administrator have demonstrated collaborative leadership, a focus on problem solving, and a genuine commitment to protecting and expanding opportunities for both student and employees. Over the past year, Mr. Clara's actions have unjustly maligned Dr. Withers and Miss, Miss Roberts, and tarnished the reputations of the board and the district as a whole." But then in 2020, while Chrissy Swett is a member of the board, it's okay to get rid of Janet Roberts. And like Channel Four News title is here, "Is There A Cloud Of Secrecy Involving The Salt Lake City School District Board?" And then it just says, "The Superintendent Lexi Cunningham and Business Administrator Janet Roberts abruptly resigned." So, so anyways, and it's effectively they got fired. And, and so, but, but this is the hypocrisy that we're dealing with. That if I bring up things that, that are inappropriate and, and, and in my opinion illegal, that I get shut down and get censored for it. But then, you know, four years later, it's okay to address it and, and fire people that should have gotten fired a decade before. So, and then, you know, and, and last year, there's this big controversy on the board, and, and again, she's right in the middle, in the mix of it, of what's going on. And the other interesting development that's happened here recently is that they've now changed the policy. So, so this board, and, and literally this year, a couple of months ago, spent, I think it was seventy thousand dollars, hired a law firm to investigate the current superintendent. And they created a policy, how you can investigate issues of the superintendent, as opposed to, when I was on the board, if I said anything, they all came unglued, and, and that I was the one that was wrong. Even though that was my role as an elected member of the board, is, is to be a caretaker of, of the district and, and its finances and how it's run, they would, they would, it, it was like, I call it the cannibalization of public education, because it, it doesn't work. If they're going to attack me, who was elected to, to oversee things, and, but now they can, it's okay for her now to be part of, oh, well, let's change policy on how we're going to investigate the superintendent, and let's spend seventy thousand to investigate this superintendent. But, you know, back in the day, you couldn't do anything like that. All right. So the final chapter of this aspect here of this presentation is the National School Board Association letter, and where they called parents domestic terrorists. And as I said, this made the, you know, made the headlines back in the fall, and it's still in the news today. One of the interesting aspects of this is that, that people were questioning Washington insiders or politicians from the very beginning, is that on September twenty-ninth, 2021, the National School Board Association sends a letter to the White House and, and equates parents that speak at board meetings as domestic terrorists, and that the Justice Department should get involved with the FBI. And October fourth, you know, four days later, and two of them being a week, the weekend, the DOJ responds. And, and, and there's like Senate hearings where senators are saying, that's impossible. You had to know before that this is going on. You didn't, you just didn't get this letter, and they denied it at first and stuff. And, and one of the more insidious parts of this is, you had like, on October fourteenth, this, this US Attorney, I think he was in Montana, yeah, in Montana, writes a letter to local law enforcement agencies, and then explains to them that they're going to partner with them and investigate parents that come to school board meetings and, and speak. And, and then he explains how their disruptive behavior, or if they make, uh, uh, school board members feeling unsafe, how that would be a federal violation. And, and so that, that's what the concern was about this. Well, what ends up happening is, there's a parent group by the name of Parents Defending Education, do a Freedom of Information Act, a FOIA request, and they get these emails. And in these emails, one of the ones that, that ends up garnering a lot of attention is in October fifth, remember this letter goes out September twenty-ninth, and sparks begin to fly. Well, one of the, the board of directors sends an email to Chrissy Swett, who is the Secretary Treasurer and Board President-elect, and says, you know, this last paragraph, she's saying, "I'm very concerned about the process by which the statement was made, and the tone that essentially allowed the White House to direct the Attorney General to consider members of our community domestic terrorists. I agree that we need to focus on civility," but, you know, so that's what her concern is. Chrissy Swett replies back to her, "I would love to talk to you about the letter when we are all together this weekend." At the time, no, I didn't think that the letter fell under an emergency situation. It certainly was not characterized that way when Chip told the officers he was writing a letter to provide information to the White House from a request by Secretary Cordona. So, so this email has gotten a lot of attention, because she just admitted, or disclosed, I should say, that, that the National School Board Association wrote this letter in, at the request of the Secretary of Education. So you kind of see this, this roundabout way, and, and this lady is right in the middle of all of it. And then we have state school board members in the state of Utah saying she's going to save the day. It's like, how can she save the day when she is in the middle of all this? And it gets better. So, so let me just point out here, before I tell you it gets, the better part of, of her involvement in this, is that the National School Board Association ends up writing an apology letter on, on October, almost a month later. "And however, there was no justification for some of the language included in the letter. We should have had a better process in place to allow for consultation on a communication of this significance." But at any rate, and I'll come back to that consultation, here's a letter from the US Senate, several senators are wanting to do hearings on this, and in their letter, they have Exhibit One, just one exhibit as to why this is important, and it's Chrissy Swett's email that I just read. The fact that, that she is aware, that, that she's admitting that the National School Board Association was colluding with the Secretary of Education in order to get the Department of Justice involved to investigate parents as domestic terrorists. This is pretty significant. And then, now we have a number of, of Attorney Generals, and, and throughout the United States now suing to get more documents to understand better this, this colluding that was going on. And her email is Exhibit F of that lawsuit that, that was just filed. And, and again, you know, this is how they refer to it, that "In addition to the White House and DOJ participation recently released, the NSBA emails obtained through Public Records Act requests that went from Chrissy Swett to Maraldo, a fellow NSBA board member, show that the NSBA letter was also specifically requested by Secretary Cordona." And, and that, and they quote that. So the thing that, that I went through these emails that were released, and, and there's a September twenty-sixth email. Now remember, the email, the, the letter goes out September twenty-ninth, this email by Chrissy Swett is not getting the attention it deserves, in my opinion. And what happens is, on September twenty-sixth, which you see how many days it is before the twenty-ninth, this guy up here, Chip, is the one that wrote the letter, but he sends this draft to these board, these officers of the, of the National School Board Association. And he says, "Good evening, Viola, Frank, Chrissy, and Charlie. I want to share with you the letter we plan on sending the president regarding threats to school board members and public schools." Deborah Rigsby worked on it and did a great job. It is very bold and calls for a threat assessment to be conducted by various federal law enforcement agencies. It also calls out several of the problems." So he goes on, "But my point is here, Chrissy Swett is on this email, she's aware of this several days before it goes out. But you notice in her duplicitous nature, and after, after the letter goes out, she doesn't tell that to her fellow board member that she saw the letter. She just says, well, it's just what, what Chip told us." But, but again, this is how, this is how this woman operates. And, and, and she actually replies to, to his email and approves the letter. "Thank you, Chip. The letter looks good. A bit long, but the content is relevant and provides perspective to the issues." And, and so, this is my issue. This guy on the state school board, what, he, he doesn't know then what's going on. If he thinks that she's going to save everything, that's not, that's not, that's not going to happen. You're, you're, you know, I was going to say betting on the wrong horse, but maybe there's a better metaphor I could use. I'll think about it. But at any rate, the National School Board Association, from my research today, all these ones in red have withdrawn their, their membership. So the, so the state, these states either have, and I don't know if you recall in the video from our state school board, our state school board is not part of the National School Board Association, but our Utah School Board Association is. And so in some of these states, their, their state associations have pulled out, and in others, their school boards have pulled out. In our case, and, and so all these red ones have pulled out, either through their state school boards or through their state associations. We have not. And, and, and the reason we have not is because they think that Chrissy Swett is going to save this thing. First of all, they only have fifteen states now for the National School Board Association. I hope she does become the president next year, because she's presiding over an association that she helped dismantle, and she was a part of it. And then, and she was probably a part of the apology letter. It's like, if, if you really are going to apologize for, for that letter that went out, calling on the Department of Justice to investigate parents as domestic terrorists, then Chrissy Swett, if she had any integrity, would, would resign herself in disgrace. But, but she doesn't have that kind of integrity. So my call to action is, we need to pull out of the National School Boards Association. Let Chrissy Swett go be the president, but Utah needs to sever all ties with the National School Board Association, and having this lady as the president doesn't change a thing. It only, it, it, she is the problem.